Okay. My apologies, we were a couple of minutes late. This has been a very long day of meetings so far, but we're all here, other than two members of council, one of whom is ill or absent due to illness, and the other one is absent because of his spouse's illness. So we're... Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. First item on tonight's agenda is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to remove the current prohibition on in-ground swimming pools within the RS7, RS8, and RS9 zones, bylaw 4363-2012.
Sorry. What a good start. Good evening, your worship and members of council. My name is Chris Jarvie, development planner with the City of Coquitlam. I'm here to present a staff-initiated tax amendment to the zoning bylaw to remove the prohibition on in-ground swimming pools within the RS7, RS8, and RS9 zones. These zones currently permit above-ground pools, and staff propose to allow in-ground pools where conditions within the zoning bylaw, B.C. Building Code, and Coquitlam Building Bylaw are satisfied. Staff are recommending all readings to bylaw 4363-2012. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? Oops, actually, I haven't read the preliminary opening, so why don't we do that? Yep. These are the rules related to public hearings. We thank you all for coming out. What has happened is that council has given first readings to these bylaws, including the one that was just presented, and first we'll hear from the staff of the Development, Planning and Development Department, and then we'll open the floor to anyone in the audience that has any views that they want to share with us. It's an opportunity to have those views known to council members, but it's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposal or your own perspective with anybody here or anybody in the audience that might have a different point of view. So everyone has to restrict their comments to the proposed bylaw, be as brief and concise as possible, and be respectful of each speaker. That's no booing, no cheering. We don't clap in here. As chair of this hearing, I reserve the right to conclude any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw that becomes abusive or becomes repetitive of views that the speaker has already made known to council members. If you wish to provide, if you have something written that you want to be part of the permanent record of the meeting, you have to hand it in to Ms. Law before the item adjourns. So we're on the first item right now, and in a few minutes, once the speakers are all done, we will adjourn that item. Before that adjournment, you have to hand in anything written that you want to be part of the permanent record. After we adjourn an item, we can't hear anything else from the audience or the public in general on the item until we've given it fourth and final reading or rejected it. So we can't get any more information after that item is closed tonight. And after the public hearing tonight, we'll convene a regularly scheduled council meeting to consider the items on tonight's agenda and perhaps some other items. If, however, during the public hearing, council has requested some more information that isn't available right now, we can reserve that item to be voted on another night. I'll now call on Ms. Law. We've already called on Ms. Law, and we've already heard from Mr. Jarvie, so I'm going to apologize for my omission on that one. And now I will say, are there any speakers to this item? This is item number one. Any speakers to this item? The swimming pools. Third and final time, any speakers to this item? Seeing none. I'll declare this item closed.
Item two is an application to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement and to authorize the city to designate the lands, buildings, and structures at 218 Begin Street as heritage property, bylaw numbers 4369 and 4371-2012.
Good evening, your worship and council members. The subject site is located on the west side of Begin Street between Brunet and Quadling Avenues. The site is designated one-family residential. Zoning on the site into the northwest and south is RS1, one-family residential. Zoning to the east is RM2, three-story medium-density apartment residential. The site currently has a single-family dwelling constructed in 1911. The dwelling, known as Suburran House, is part of the early French-Canadian settlement in Mayardville and designed as an Edwardian-era four-square building with a symmetrical square plan, lapped wood siding, pyramidal roof, hipped roof veranda, and wooden veranda columns. The applicant is proposing to place a heritage designation on the Suburran House and to enter into a heritage revitalization agreement with the city to rehabilitate the Heritage Building to its 1911 appearance. And you construct four additional housing units on the site. The Heritage Building will be retained as a freestanding building fronting Beijun Street, as you can see sideways.
I guess they'll save room by tilting.
Yes, exactly. Thank you, Carrie. Staff are recommending all final readings to the Heritage Designation Bylaw, 4371, and the Heritage Revitalization Agreement, bylaw number 4369. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers to this item? This is on Begin Street. Please step forward. We'll ask you to state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Helen McGinnis. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and myself. We are the property owners next to Mr. Howard Yeas' proposed construction. And speaking with Mr. Yeas, as we've been sitting for the past 20 minutes or so, he has wrote in a letter to us, and I'm not sure if you all have a copy of our concerns. Yes? I've gone over the letter with my husband, and it looks like everything will be in order, and all of the requests that we've asked for are going to be addressed. So at this point in time, we're okay with the development, and just for the records, hopefully we'll all be neighbors.
Well, thank you very much for that, and thank you, Mr. Yeas, for working with the folks in the neighborhood to make sure everything, any of their concerns that can't be resolved get resolved. Are there any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed.
Item three is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 721 Gautier Avenue from RT1 to family residential to RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential, bylaw number 4353-2012.
Good evening again. The subject site is located on the north side of Gautier, adjacent to and east of Low Heed Highway. The site and surrounding sites are designated neighborhood attached residential. Zoning on the site and the surrounding area is RT1 to family residential. The site currently has a single-family dwelling. The applicant seeks to rezone the site to RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential to facilitate a quadruplex residential development, and staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4353.
We have one registered speaker, Ken Mallow, at 265 Bernacci.
Good evening. I'm not, we're not opposed to the rezoning, but we're concerned with the plan to close the lane. We use that lane, and we've been using it for almost 40 years. If we don't exit by the lane onto the Low Heed, we have to back up out onto Bernacci Street. Bernacci Street has a fair amount of traffic with the school, parents, and stuff in the mornings and after school. I don't think it's safe. We've never seen an accident at the Low Heed. I don't think there's a reason to close the access to the Low Heed there. No one can turn left. There's a median dividing the road, and I feel it's safer to exit in a forward onto something than backing onto something. There was also a concern as to how they will restrict the parking in the lane to access for people coming in and out. I hope there will be no parking in the lane, but I think that might be something we would address after. I'm not too familiar with this.
Okay, which property is yours?
We're 265 Bernacci.
Oh, okay. You're across the lane.
We're across the lane, directly across from where they intend to park, where the garages are going to be built. But generally speaking, we drive down the lane to enter our property, and we exit by the highway. We also have a neighbor behind us who drives down the lane and exits by the highway. Once the lane is not, you know, you couldn't even turn around at the bottom once the development proceeds, so we would really need that ability to exit onto the, you know, the highway. There's a lane on the highway that turns onto Alderson, so we're not going right into the middle of the highway, and it's not much of a highway either. It's 60 kilometers, you know, an hour, and that's pretty much it. Like I said, the development's gonna be fine, so please consider, you know, keeping the lane open when you proceed with this. Thank you.
Are we talking about Girard Avenue at this point?
Girard, right away.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, your worship. Just to draw your attention and all of council to the aerial, properties that are actually fronting Girard, Girard is an unbuilt road allowance, so all those, the properties across the lane take access from the lane, both the speaker's property and the one next to it. The goal, I guess the objective from a safety perspective is actually to close the lane on Low Heed. That's actually a greater, from the engineering's perspective, is that the greater safety issue is to have a lane accessing to a major road like that. That's a greater safety concern, which is why that's been identified as part of this project. We have been made aware just recently around the issue of the RV, and we are going to be working with the civil engineer on this project to confirm what your site distances are for this vehicle. I know there's a hydro pole that's in that area. We could certainly look at that infrastructure, whether it can be relocated. The goal is also to have a turnaround at the lane, at the highway, so there'd be some turnaround opportunity. So our goal would be to, our overriding goal would be to have that lane closed, but to address this gentleman and then the adjacent properties' needs for turnaround and proper access to their vehicles, and that we would be working with the applicant and the civil engineer to facilitate that. If that is not achievable, we'd have to reassess it. We understand the issue, but at this point, we feel that with the surplus areas that there are, road allowances in that area, we could achieve both, but we would want to take a look in that property and see where your vehicle currently accesses, its turning radius is to the property that's under consideration today. Insofar as parking, parking is restricted in a local lane, so there would be no parking off that lane.
Thank you. All right. Well, just keep in mind, in 40 years, I've never seen an accident there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hodge.
Yeah, I have a few questions about this. I was just actually trying to sort of quickly call up a street view. I drove down and looked at the property, but I came in at the front from Gautier, and then I sort of went around in the back in the lane. It was quite confusing getting in there. So Gautier at the back, the lane, that is currently, that's currently open?
Yes.
And it's legally open? It's not just something that sort of just over time has just become open? This is something we've only just become aware of?
No, we were aware that this lane, this lane here, is the lane that currently provides access to the properties here, the two properties on Gautier. Now Gautier is, the road itself is not an open road allowance, so this is the actual property to the, or access to these two properties. We've recently become aware that this owner here that just spoke has a recreational vehicle of reasonable size that may have limitations in terms of turning movements on that lane. So we're just, we would like to work with that property owner. We'd like to, the civil engineering plans for this development would have to look at those utilities, and we would look at where that hydro pole is located, where we can get turning movements off of that property to try and make sure that that works. And in this area, there is an opportunity in this area to have a turnaround, okay, in that, for vehicles, right at the end of that. Yes, so we're also exploring that. Again, as you can see, even with the current site, it's been closed off. There's an attempt made to close off roads to Low Heed Highway because, obviously, the two classifications are typically not found. A local road, a lane to a major arterial road is not a condition that we want to perpetuate. So that's one of the overriding goals.
But yet we've closed off Gautier, but...
Gautier has never, sorry Gautier, yes, and that was closed. That's correct, and there's an underpass.
The road was closed off, but the lane in behind was not.
Well, what occurred, if I can, your worship, when the road, there was a major, obviously, road rehabilitation project for Low Heed Highway. At that time, there was really an attempt to just build this road as a major project. The city typically doesn't close accesses as part of that process because that does require more consultation, and the right opportunity would be an opportunity like today to look at where some of these constraints may occur. There are two properties we're talking about here that currently take access, I guess, directly off of this access from the highway.
But this move is really not because of this development, although it will add some traffic into the area, but this is really an issue that exists, whether or not this proposal will go through, or is this just going to trigger it because we're going to see an extra six cars potentially coming and going from here?
Your worship, that's correct. We are going to be seeing more redevelopment in this area. It is a neighborhood attached residential. With the addition of four units here, we felt that it's at that time that we should look at closing that access, and traffic will eventually build as more projects are developed in the area. But we felt with the addition of those units, it's the right time to address the potential safety issue.
And all parking is at the back. When I look at this, because of the shape of the property, it's a very narrow front and wider. It's a pie shape, so that's why we, the developer's proposing to put the parking at the back. There's no driveway, there's no entrance at the front. I'm presuming there'd be some on-street parking at the front?
Your worship, actually, you are correct. The site itself has most of its frontage on the lane. It is the best opportunity. You can also see the shape of the actual road in front of the property here on Gautier. That road is quite narrow. We are, you can see, it's hard to tell, but that's quite a narrow road in front of this property. As a result of that narrow road, there isn't a lot of available on-street parking, and so we, I think we've included in one of the sketches, I'm not sure if I have it here, but there's some roadworks on Gautier that would allow some turnaround on Gautier, but there's not going to be any on-street parking on Gautier because of the narrow pavement width between Bernacci and the property. So that's where the rear lane is, does have all the parking, and I believe there's all of the parking required under the bylaw, and there's, I think, a couple of stalls on aprons as well, additional to the parking requirements.
But the concern is always that for visitors and people coming in, because we're not going to allow parking in the lane because that's standard throughout the city, but what you're saying is there will be no on-street parking at the front as well as no parking in the lane?
Yes, that's correct.
Even though there's only two homes in that block, well, I guess the new one and the existing one, and then across the street from that, as recollection is, that's the entrance into the underground pedestrian underpass, so there's no homes across the street. So essentially, we have in that one little block, considering both sides of the road, all we'll have is one house and this new development, and yet there'll be no parking available at the front.
The narrow pavement makes it quite difficult. There's still some details that we're working out in terms of distances to the corner, potentially on the south side of that road, but because of required distances to the intersection of Bernacci, we can't confirm. There could be a stall there. We're working with very narrow pavement, and we could not obtain, the objective was not to pile on for this size of a property, additional five or six meters road dedication. It was felt that that was onerous to a property of this size in this location. As a result, it was felt that we could obtain a couple of additional stalls and aprons at the rear without impacting this development. There is no development opportunities to the south, as you can see. It's really just a road allowance where the pathway enters underneath the highway.
Right.
So certainly, there could be an opportunity for adding stalls to the south, but we'd have to significantly change that, and there's some significant grades in there, and it made it very, very difficult to do that. So all those constraints put together led us to the current design.
Who owns the property across the street, that triangular piece across?
That's a road allowance. I believe that's city-owned.
So it's ours.
But there's a substantial grade in there.
But we can't just shift the road over to our size? It's that steep.
My understanding...
It's an underpass.
It's an underpass.
I remember the underpass part, so it gets steep. I just wondered, it just seems that, you know, for parking, that's always becomes the issue on these things, to once again have a development without parking on the front. I'm just looking at where our options are. On-site parking is, how many stalls altogether? It's seven?
Six. But there's six stalls on the property, which, there's six formal stalls on the property. There's a number in garages, four in garages, and two in parking pads, but there are two apron stalls also in front of the garages, which also can be utilized as informal tandem stalls, so technically you could have the availability of eight stalls on the property.
Four in the garage, two on pads, and two, which is basically the driveway, which is like a single-family home. You get one in the garage and one in the driveway.
Correct.
So for two more in the driveway for a total of six formal, eight, potentially.
Correct, yes.
I find myself wondering why we don't just... Just a second. Sorry, I was just waiting for staff to... I find myself wondering why we don't offer to close the road. We haven't, there's no, the end of the road, as it butts up the Low Heed, and I guess that's Gautier, is of no value to anybody other than it's an extra pavement that you're not allowed to park in.
Two stalls at the end.
Okay. And I don't want to conduct land negotiations on camera here, but, yeah, I mean, I remember going through there as a kid, and it was...
That's what I was trying to get the street level of my mind.
Yeah. I like the blue spot.
Very well, I'm not sure why it's not reading.
Okay, come over and look at it.
We're left with a few options, and I apologize. For those of you who can see, and I'll look past this one, there is a, so the subject site is, this is the bridge, this is the, very now to the overpass. This is the stop sign at Bernacci in the front of the property. So you can see in the distance the subject property. Over closer here is the property right on the corner that's not being developed right now, so the actual property line is right near the edge of that curb line. There appears to be some area to the south, which is the two, that's why it's white. However, there's a stop sign here, there's some sightline requirements, distances from the stop sign, so we don't yet know whether we have an opportunity, given the steep bank that's actually built, parking stall there to expand the road. So there are some things we are looking at.
There's a stop sign, but no one would ever be on that road.
So, yes, but, you know, speaking to the engineering department, you would push the time here, this parking on the south side, this engineering isn't here, but you can agree that we will have...
Yeah, understood.
But typically, where the fence is, is right at the edge of that bank. So we have to look at how stable that bank is, how close we can actually build a parking pad. We would look to do that, if possible, certainly under council's direction. I can sort of pass this around to you.
Sure.
Apologies for that.
No worries.
Am I still, do I still have the floor?
Okay, well, why don't you come on up, Sue.
At the Low Heed, at the bottom of Gautier, every year, every summer, two, three, four vehicles go for sale, and they park there, and people driving by on the highway can see them. So there is room down there for vehicles. I don't know how much of it could be formally turned into parking, but I know that there is space for at least three, if not four vehicles, without interfering with anybody. So just to make it clear, there's room at the end of Gautier, at the highway, for several vehicles.
There you go. Yes, respective purchasers. Okay, Councilor Hodge, you done?
No, I just, but that sort of helps to sort of make the point that I was asking. If that road dead-ends, there's at least the width of a road, and it's a road to nowhere, could the road not end 50 feet shorter at the neighbor's house? Because there's no point driving down in front of the other to the new property because you can't park in front anyway, so why not turn that road into three stalls at the end, just diagonal straight in at the end of the road? I mean, I'm just thinking that there may be potential for street parking. I mean, it's sort of one or the other. You're saying, well, if we park on the road, we can't drive by it, but nobody's going to drive by it because there's nowhere to go, and I'm just looking for potential for where it becomes an issue down the road, where we may be able to put parking, because we certainly don't want it in the lane. And I just think that, like these developments, visitor parking, visitor parking becomes the issue. So I just throw that, I know we can't solve it here, but it just looks to me like the parking may not be as bad as we think if we have potential to do something creative down the road.
If I can, your worship, yes, it is a suggestion, actually, I was discussing this afternoon with the general manager of engineering and public works, that exact possibility. I think there is an opportunity to try and achieve as much parking on that road end as possible within the constraints that are available. We have tried to accommodate a turnaround, but I think we can probably accommodate a turnaround, and if that area, if that actual built part of the road gets pulled back, we might be able to accommodate one or two more stalls potentially with a turnaround on the property itself if we need to, to have the cars turn around. We're certainly prepared, and certainly engineering and public works has also indicated that we're quite prepared to facilitate and to partner in that with the developer, and we would then, under that direction, we could get their engineer and our engineers working to maximize on-street parking on that road end, including moving the access back further to accommodate those.
Thank you.
Okay, back to my point. I'm not sure why, whether it's on-street parking that I want here, since we don't need that street anymore, it might improve some other flow of a property if it was a dead end that was slightly shorter. I'm looking at the street view, the Google street view, and it doesn't make any sense for me for us to continue to own a street that doesn't go anywhere.
That's right.
So, I mean, let's stop owning it, allow it to be somewhat greener space, perhaps, to allow property that still has room for four, but at least has some access to front parking, as well as some expanded green space. I think it's a pretty tight lot anyway for four, and I think this might make it work better. But, Councilor O'Neill.
Yeah, so the, just a clarification, the zoning that they are applying for here requires 1.5 stalls per unit, and there's four units. There are six dedicated stalls. In addition, now, we come up with this question the last couple of months, it's come before us before, and residents have come to us and say there's no parking anywhere else that these people can park on. I'm thinking of the Austin development for the four little cottage type houses that we're going to be going there. However, in this, it does appear to me that there's lots of off, lots of other parking that's quite nearby. Is the, on Bernacci Street, on both the west and east sides of Bernacci Street, that's a, there are not parking restrictions there, are there? And that's just a very short walk to the proposed development.
It's my understanding, your worship, that it's, that road is not entirely, there's some gravel shoulders there. It's not entirely finished, so there are some informal opportunities. Ultimately, when that is built, rebuilt, there would be opportunities under a collector, I think it's a collector at this point. At this point, there are some opportunities further up, but they are on very informal gravel shoulders.
Well, that's fine. I mean, we're just talking about rezoning this particular property to allow this particular development that meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. development that meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw for numbers of parking spaces provided. And then we're talking about additional parking, and right now, there's additional parking available on Bernachee, it's just probably a 20-second walk away. And, but now, we, there's been discussion about how big this area is in front of the house there, where the, it is gravel, by the way, as well. Now, I drove down there last fall and took some pictures, and it's actually a pretty sizable area, and I did a very comfortable U-turn there as well. At this time, you could easily park two cars in front of the red fence that is on the south side of that house, easily, I would think. So the, that's not the biggest issue facing us right now, the real issue is rezoning this property, and, but the parking always does come up at this stage, and you've told me that there's parking available on Bernachee. I think there's parking available, actually, at the end of Gautier as well right now, and will still be there if we don't do anything. And there's still, people drive down there and do U-turns, I know I did, and there's, that's what you're supposed to do when you get to a street like that. There is a sign right at the end that says no right turn, while you can't turn right anyway onto Low Heat Highway because there's a big barrier there. So anyway, I'm satisfied with this, thank you. I'll show you this.
Okay, I'm sure you'll wait for the rest of the speakers, but Councilor Asmus?
Well, I still think, and I thank Councilor Hodge for bringing it up, and well, and that's an issue I think Councilor Hodge and I have talked about a couple of times right now, is our parking standard on single-family homes, we know this in the northeast and different areas, well, it may be fine today. Down the road, if we do the infill housing that we're talking about in this area, and we keep a 1.5, and you've got four units with only six parking spots and nothing on the street, and if the other lot starts to develop the same densities, you're going to have a lot of issues about parking. And I think we need to be ahead of the game on this one, and I think the mayor's suggestion about the end down there, creating more parking, is a good idea. But I do think the staff, as we are looking at the housing choices in these areas, it's been an issue from council. 1.5 for single-family residential where you're going to have guaranteed two cars per year?
Yeah.
So that's my point, but the development is, I'll support it.
It's a public hearing?
Yeah.
We're still in the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just leave it.
Sometimes we're, it's been a long, it's a long day.
Long day, long day.
Are there any other speakers to this item? Please step forward.
Hi.
Yes?
My name is Tendra Mann, and I'm from Architec Design, the designer for this project, and my address is 233 West 28th Street, North Vancouver. I just wanted to mention that, subsequent to the design, we designed this quite a while ago, and the RT3 parking bylaw, the size of the stalls, has changed. And so what we did was to look at, you know, in response to the concerns for more parking, I did look at a sketch to incorporate another stall along the lane, and we can easily do that. So along the lane, we're able to add one more surface stall without, you know, changing the feel or the sense of the backyards, because the stalls are one foot narrower now, and so it allows us to add one more stall. So we submitted a sketch, I don't know if you have it handy, but we submitted an updated site plan for that. So we can get one more at the back. In addition to that, if it was permitted, in front of Unit 2 in the front yard, we'd also be able to incorporate one more stall at the corner if that was to be supported, and we could still achieve the minimum private yard areas that are required. So we could add two more stalls easily to this site. In addition to that, as mentioned, on the attached units, Unit 3 and 4 on the driveways, we could have two more informal stalls. So we'd have a total of 10 stalls that we could accommodate on this site for, you know, four units, so that would be more than two per unit. And so we'd be happy to make that change if that was supported. So, and if there's, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item? Please.
My name is Linda Mallow. I live at 265 Bernachee, with that fellow right there. And I still have my main concerns. I've lived there for almost 40 years, I've paid taxes for 40 years, I paid my share to have the lane paved. It's taking away from the value of my property if you take away that lane. And our property, and we're not just talking about the trailer, the trailer's not the biggest problem, trust me, we can get it out of there probably, we're talking about, my husband's going to have to back up all the way down the lane. Now, do you know what's adjacent to our area? There's a Montessori school, there's a Fatima school, there's, this is all on Alderson. I mean, there's the Alderson School, so there's one, two, three schools in a row, and then there's also the Belvedere Care Center. And everybody that takes their kids to school goes flying up Bernachee. You try backing up onto Bernachee, it's dangerous. And if, no, but don't you agree? Yeah, and, you know, I mean, we live in a wooden building, this gentleman lives next door to the new development, the gentleman on my right? Anyway, him in the blue jacket. And, you know, he came tonight to voice his concerns. We want emergency vehicles to be able to come up and down, and if I want an emergency vehicle there, I don't care if he turns right off the Low Heat Highway if my house is on fire. You know, I mean, I just, and I don't want him backing out, well, maybe if it's during the day, but, I don't know, I just don't think it's a good idea to close our lane because it's going to affect the value of my property, it's going to affect the safety of my family, and my friends, and anybody else. But I do like the parking, you know, like on Gautier Street, where you could add more parking there. But green space I'm really concerned about, so if they're adding more parking spaces within that little area that they want to put, you know, two duplexes in, does that take away the green space for the kids that might eventually come? You know, I'm concerned about green space and trees and things. And what else? Yeah, if nobody parks in the lane, that would be a good thing, because I wouldn't want them flying out of their garage while I'm backing out of my spot, because bad things could happen there. Anyway, that's all I've got to say, and I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Councilor O'Neill?
Yeah, just a clarification on the process coming out of that last question, and her husband's question as well. Just to confirm, what we're doing today is looking at an issue regarding rezoning some land. And later tonight, if things proceed, we'll be deciding on the rezoning of the land. That rezoning, even though there apparently is a proposal about lane closing, that rezoning does not necessarily entail lane closing, correct?
That's actually correct. Our intent is, with additional density, would be to look at closing the lane, and with that, the proponent, civil engineer hired by the developer, would be looking at whatever works are required to assist in that. Although, what we've committed because of the additional, the need for additional turnaround and further examination of potential parking opportunities, we would look at that and determine, could we deal with both the issues of on-street parking and turnaround for vehicles on that lane were it to be closed? So there is a broad intent with the additional density that will come with this, to close that lane to Low Heat Highway because of long-term safety, that will be used by new residents in this, on this property. And the intent would be to look at that issue with the development of this site. However, but there is an opportunity, if, with this application, to look at, to keep it open, but at this point, we've identified the closure as an important component.
So council can't actually instruct you to keep that lane open or to close it? This is entirely a bureaucratic decision, then?
It's a decision from the engineering, manager of Engineering and Public Works.
And is there a appeal process from that? If the lane is decided to be closed, and people are opposed to that, is there any appeal at all to that?
Typically, a closure of a road like this, council would be the ultimate appeal. So normal process would be the Engineering Public Works Department would go out, consult with the residents, look at future road network, and advise that there's a change in the network. Ultimately, the appeal would be city council.
Okay, thank you. And council could say that in spite of the best efforts of staff and the recommendations, and perhaps even the legal opinions that might have been presented at that point, we will substitute our judgment. Council could do that, yes. Okay. Counselor Reimer?
Thank you. Well, my questions were very similar around the lane, and I was trying to get a sense if engineering had already done some sort of a study on this. Also wondered if fire had provided any input to it as well with respect to the lane closure. I do realize we're talking about the rezoning, which is somewhat separate from the lane closure, but it's not. So, those are my questions.
Your Worship, engineering has done a very, very preliminary look, that it's, their high-level intent is to close these lanes wherever possible because of long-term safety. They have not identified any issue with fire response in this area. And I don't believe that this is a response route because of the nature of the actual road and condition to it, but we would look at that issue as part of the lane closure completion process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing adjourned.